We'll call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Roll call?
Councilman Russell.
Present.
Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilwoman Austin.
Present.
Councilman Bob.
Outing.
Councilman Wishick.
Here.
All right, will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America in the spirit of God, over which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, up first, under Presentations, we have a Health Insurance Update. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy to see you all again. Hoping to have the renewal by today, we don't as of yet, but things are looking pretty good so far, just giving you some highlights real quick. You know, our trend's running good, folks. Right now, we're still averaging per employee costs of only about $4.49 a month versus a national average of $8.63, which is an exceptional victory considering here in Indiana, we're actually on the least healthy side of the trend. So, and $5.95 versus $16.63 for family. So, all our numbers and so forth are still well below and running very well. So, that's great. You know, as far as renewal time, you know, it's our first year self-funded, so normally we like to lock in about two months early, but first year self-funded, it's an immature plan year, we really only have truthfully about six months of real claim data. So, we're gonna see what the next month looks like and hopefully lock in some numbers for you here in the next two weeks or so. But, all the statistics, everything on it's looking really, really strong, no major claims coming through. So, I mean, we'll probably have a small increase this year, but it should be, you know, manageable and certainly well below, obviously, what the norm is out there. So, I'll get that to Dex here in a couple of weeks, obviously, I'll get that to you folks, but as far as the health insurance, things are running very, very good. We have the dental renewal this morning, their first offer's 5.9%, which dental trend's about seven, so it's still under trend, and we're coming off three years of no rate increases on that. So, we're expecting probably a small bump this year, so everything's looking good there. Still working on the other group things, the disability, the life insurance, but all in all, very pleased with the way things are running and looking forward to another good year. So, any questions on that? I'm gonna say, today, I'm gonna keep it pretty short. All right. Other than that, you know, Dex and I have been working on some wellness programs and so forth, I think he shared with you folks. So, we'll be running the numbers on that after we lock in the health insurance renewal, which is, of course, our biggest expense, and plan on following up with you folks here in the next month or two. With a, I think we're targeting a goal maybe around the first of year to kick off a more comprehensive program to, you know, keep your costs down well below the national average where you guys currently are.
Thank you. I know, I look forward to having a more comprehensive wellness program for the staff.
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, you guys have made great strides in your benefits over the past several years, and we're continuing to go down that road, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, under Presentations, we have the badge pinning for PSO Gibbons and PSO Dieter.
Counsel, thank you all very much. We have two of our newest officers who just graduated the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, and they were not here, they were actually in the academy the last time we did a badge pinning, and so we're going to do them tonight. So, if Kirsten and your family would like to come up. Council Officer Kristen, Kirsten Gibbons, is a 2008 graduate of the Indianapolis Metropolitan High School. She joined WMPD on 2/22 of 2017 with prior experience with the Hamilton County 911 Center. She also graduated in 2008 from the Methodist Hospital EMTB Program, of which she still holds that certification. A recent graduate of the 211th Session of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy on June 16th of 2017, PSO Gibbons will be pinned by her husband, Aaron, and their children. It's always tough under pressure, we practiced this beforehand. Counsel, it's my honor to introduce to you Public Safety Officer Kirsten Gibbons. Officer Derek Dieter. Council Officer Derek Dieter is a graduate, a 2009 graduate of Western High School out of Rushville, Indiana. He joined WMPD on February 22nd, 2017, and is a recent graduate of the 211th Session of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. He did his internship with Ivy Tech and Tipping Canoe County Sheriff's Department in 2011, and he was a United States Army recruiter since 2012 before joining our department. He achieved instructor status in 2015 and completed the Warrior Leadership Course in 2014. PSO Gibbons, I'm sorry, PSO Dieter will be pinned by his wife. Makai. I always mess that up. We practiced that. Counsel, it's my honor to introduce to you Public Safety Officer Derek Dieter.
Go Army!
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for your service to the town.
Welcome aboard.
Up next, we have the Court Treasurer Report. Does anyone on counsel have questions? All right, we will move on to number four, Department Reports. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I would entertain any amendments to tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I would make the following motion to make the following amendments to tonight's agenda. Under item number eight, New Business, number A, I'd like to table the ordinance amending the ISUC 5 ANC and PUD text. I would like to table item number eight G, considering the fiscal policy resolution for the contiguous territory for the town of Whitestown, Indiana.
I couldn't hear the second one, Susan.
That's item number G, eight G. Table number K, letter K, under New Business. And in addition, I'd like to add an item R, discussion of expenditures exceeding $5,000 for DPW maintenance building. Add an item S, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for the Employee Wellness Proposal.
We have an R and S.
I'm sorry?
We have an R and S.
Do you all have? Okay, add, um... Add a... Well, we kind of adjust it once we do that. So, five, six, oops, Employee Wellness is on there. So then, we add number, um... I'd like to add an X. Consider waiving building fees for St. Mark's Church.
Dex.
Yes. Those would be the changes.
I can't get it up, but we can make that for Richard.
St. Mark's.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. All right, up next, we have the Public Request to Speak section of our meeting. And up first, we have Carol Sparks Drake.
If you are tabled, please do not speak.
Okay, yes, it has been tabled. Tom Drake. Okay. Becky Robert. Okay. Becky Emrick.
Same Becky.
All right, last, we have Harry Cook.
Sorry, mine isn't in the same category, so no table. This won't take long, I apologize actually for even taking your time about this matter, but I called the utility company, or utility department yesterday about a late fee, and I, like I say, I apologize for you bringing this, but they said that if I were to need to appeal it, I would need to appeal it to the council, so that's why I'm here. My utility bill last month was $81.06, through whatever issue there was, I, my payment was received $81.05, so it was a penny short. The payment was actually posted and cleared my bank four days early, and so they said to appeal that penalty, the penalty is $5.79. So, you know, if the treasurer's here, I actually have a penny that I could pay tonight and clear that, but they said that I'd have to come and, you know, talk to you about appealing the late fee, so.
So, Steve, is this something where the council needs to make a motion? For them to be able to clear this up? Or how would we?
No, I don't, I mean, I don't know that we would, but if the council certainly feels like they want to direct the staff to waive the penny in the late fee, I don't have a problem with that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we've got a motion, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, moving forward, can we empower the utilities to do this without us?
Well, there is a process for disconnection, so we have an issue where when people don't pay their fees and their property's gonna be disconnected, people have an opportunity to appeal that, and that would come before the council, so those would, but these types of issues, we usually can work out, so I'm not concerned about it. They generally have that authority, but I'm comfortable with you guys making the motion, and then it's clear, and we'll just move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted.
Should I call the department then, or should they take care of it?
Jason is here, and he will make sure that they take care of it.
It's a nice meeting you, sorry to take your time.
Oh, thank you. All right, moving on to item number six, Consent, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Mr. President, I'd make the motion that we approve the consent agenda, which includes item A, meeting minutes from 5:10, 2017, and we're going to be meeting the claims, the May 2017 expenses town, the May 2017 revenues town, May 2017 utility claims, which include water operating and wastewater operating, and item C, the Moon Town Brewery Roof Low Bid Approval for the bid sheet.
Mr. President, I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. Moving on to our first item under New Business, letter B. Ordinance 2017-22 is in front of us on first read.
Ordinance 2017-22, an ordinance adopting an updated employee manual for the town of Whitestown, Indiana.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we waive the second reading and suspend the rules and have the vote tonight. Ordinance 2017-22.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero, rules are suspended.
Ordinance 2017-22, an ordinance adopting an updated employee manual for the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance number 2017-22.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. All right, at this time, we're going to open up a public hearing for ordinance 2017-23, and that is an ordinance approving an additional appropriation. Does someone have what that, what the appropriation is, so we can state that before we start the public hearing?
DMs fund, supplies, 20,000 EMS supplies and equipment, other services and charges, EMS, other services and charges, 10,000, EMS training, 10,000, capital outlays, EMS capital outlays, 59,000, EMS fund total, 99,000.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak on the proposed ordinance? Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to letter D, Considering Ordinance 2017-23.
Additional appropriation and reduction ordinance number 2017-23. Again, this is for the EMS fire fund, supplies line, EMS supplies and equipment, 20,000, other services and charges, EMS, other services and charges line, 10,000, EMS training line, 10,000, capital outlays, EMS, capital outlays, 59,000, total EMS fund, 99,000.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have second reading on ordinance number 2017-23 this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero, rules are suspended.
Ordinance 2017-23, additional appropriation and reduction ordinance, Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance number 2017-23.
Mr. President, I make the motion that we adopt ordinance number 2017-23.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have letter E, Ordinance 2017-24.
Ordinance 2017-24, an ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, providing for preapproval of claims for the provision of emergency ambulance services.
Mr. President, I recommend we, I'd make a motion, we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance number 2017-24 this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero, rules are suspended.
Ordinance 2017-24, an ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, providing for preapproval of claims for the provision of emergency ambulance services. Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance 2017-24.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have ordinance 2017-25 in front of us on first read.
An ordinance of the town council, uh, an ordinance number 2017-25, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, concerning improper utility connections and theft of utility service. Mr. President, I make the motion that we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance 2017-25 this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero.
Second read, ordinance number 2017-25, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, concerning improper utility connections and theft of utility service. Mr. President, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 2017-25.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Moving on to letter H, Resolution 2017-22.
Town of Whitestown, Indiana, Resolution Number 2017-22, a resolution concerning interest in and the authority to purchase or acquire property, Indianapolis Road Roundabout Project. Mr. President, I would make the motion, we adopt Resolution Number 2017-22, resolution concerning interest in and the authority to purchase or acquire property for the Indianapolis Road Roundabout Project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Resolution's adopted, five to zero.
I do want to say, thank you, you guys worked really hard to get this done, and to do it in a great and forthright manner, and working with the property owners, so I really appreciate that.
Up next, we have letter I, Resolution 2017-23.
Resolution 2017-23, a resolution of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving real property tax deductions in Whitestown ERA number two, under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1, Browning Duke LLC. Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution Number 2017-23.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Resolution's adopted, five to zero. Moving on to letter J, Resolution 2017-24.
Resolution 2017-24, a resolution of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving personal property tax deductions in Whitestown ERA number two, under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1, Brooks Sports Incorporated.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-24.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Resolution's adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have letter L, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for the WMPD Mobile Command Unit purchase.
I'll start. Chief emailed me, I think it was Monday, and stated that this particular vehicle has been purchased by a fellow public safety agency in the county, which would be the County Sheriff's Department. So, I told him, he asked, should we take it off the agenda, and I consulted, and we wanted to at least come up and ask, do we continue to pursue such an item? And if not, we'll move on. So, Chief can, I think, can tell you why, if we want to move forward, give you the pros, we obviously have the cons as well, but he can tell you a little bit of why, and if you decide that probably something we should move on from, then we'll move on to the next item.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'm assuming everybody got my email with the video and the photo string, and you had an opportunity to review that. This particular unit that we were looking at, in today's cost, would, about, costs is about $350,000 to build. These things don't come available very often, and when they do, they're usually never in that kind of condition, and that's why I was kind of pressing to try and get it before the council. The best that we could hope for on this one particular vehicle is to become the backup purchaser, if for whatever reason it doesn't go through with the original purchase order that's been signed, then that would put us in a position that we can take control and step in as the primary purchaser. Short of that, there's nothing that I've been able to find that's out there currently, even in that remote price range. Everything is newer demo-style models that are in that $185,000 all the way up to $385,000 price range. So, my question, I guess, is this, as we continue to grow, as we're seeing the types of incidents that are happening around us, we're only going to get busier, it's not going to slow down, and the mobile command is, it's a one-time deep-pocket purchase. It's something that will last the agency and last the community for well over 20 years, due to the fact that it's not out there, and it's not moved, and it's not driven every single day, as long as you maintain it. There are things that we would have to do to upgrade it from time to time, but that would be miniscule money in comparison to what a brand-new unit would cost us. We had provisions set already with WMU, the director had offered a place that we could house it until a new facility for the police department was built, and it could be ready, responded within just minutes by our duty staff. And so, again, it's an opportunity that's there, it's kind of slipped through our fingers due to timing, it's of nobody's fault. The information that I provided the council last month had some errors in the documentation from the dealership, and I didn't catch that, and it was Councilman Russell and Councilman Wishick, who was doing their due diligence. It took them to the wrong vehicle, and so they were scoping out the wrong one, and that's why I sent out that video of where I actually went, took a look at the truck, and went through it, did an inspection, and it's an unbelievable opportunity, but it's one that may have passed us by, unfortunately. Didn't we have a mobile command unit at one point? We have a mobile trailer that works good for staged events, but it does not work well for major incidents, like you could not pull that thing out onto the interstate and try and run operations out of it, it requires multiple people to bring it, it doesn't have its own power source and those kinds of things. For the Meet the Chiefs nights, for special events, yes, it works absolutely great because we have time to get it there, get it set up, bring the power over, bring the light tower over, and those kinds of things, those work fine. The Parks Department is interested in taking that over if, when, and if we're ready to move it, move on to something else to utilize for their staged events, and to be able to store their special project stuff in the trailer itself, and that way, it's just ready whenever they want to pull it to wherever they want to go, so. way it's just ready whenever they, they want to pull it to wherever they want to go, so...
Dennis, when it's an incident like you're talking about, it's multiple agencies responding, right?
Usually.
Not just Whitestown?
Yeah.
Does the county have a unit?
Well, they're about to have.
Okay.
Because the...
That kind of covers the need, doesn't it?
They're, they're about to purchase this one.
The, um, you, you mentioned that it's kind of hard because you gotta get something that's, hook up the trailer and take it someplace? Would it be cheaper to just get and dedicate a tow vehicle and stay with the trailer and get another one?
It, it still requires you to, to manually set the thing up, um, you, you can't have power running to it all the time, um, it was...
So what would, what would the modifications cost to set that trailer up? Would that be cheaper?
I don't know. And when you're talking...
Putting a generator on it and that kind of stuff?
Yeah. I, I don't know. I don't know what the, what those actual costs would be.
So I gue- I guess to me, at this time, it doesn't seem like we really need to put money towards this, particularly if the county has purchased one.
Well, my concern is whether or not they actually get the, the purchase done. And if they don't, then we've lost it totally, not only the, the county, but us as well.
Susan?
Chief, why wouldn't the SRT team, as a, as a group, be looking at each of the municipalities to put in for this? Because wouldn't that logically be a special response vehicle that could come out and help? And, I mean, same as what we did to help supply the SRT group, why wouldn't it be the additional, you know, all the municipalities joining in?
We've...
Since they've made the decision to go and try to purchase this, to make sure that it's available for everyone?
It'll be available, I, I don't know what that availability is going to be, to be honest with you, and no one really does, uh, because there's some retrofitting that has to be done with it, and how it's going to be allocated, we don't know yet. We would like, I'd like to be able to say yes, in, in all confidence, that we could pick up the phone and make the call and it would respond. But how that all is going to shake itself out, we don't know yet. We've asked, um, and we've talked about it at, at the chief's meetings, um, that's where it came up, and that's where I got questioned about it, because they learned from it, from our, our May council agenda. That, in theory, what they're hoping to be able to do is provide it for use throughout the county, um, but it's going to require probably us getting people certified on it to, to drive and respond it, as well as them getting people, as well as Lebanon getting people, um, so that it's not one agency that's dedicated to try and go get it and, and respond it out. So, like, chances are, we would be, uh, responding and picking it up and taking it to a county incident, or Lebanon would be picking it up to take to a county incident, or county taking it to a Lebanon incident, kind, kind of that theory. And that's what we do, uh, currently with the SRT vehicles. Um, they have a number of different drivers from different agencies that all share that responsibility, so that no one agency is taxed with that. I would assume that this will be the same way, but there's no MOU or anything.
So why can't we get an MOU?
Well, and there probably will be. If, if they're successful in, in getting it, um, then most likely there will be an MOU put together.
I, I can see the need, county-wide, and, and just so everybody knows, the, the Police Commission did recommend that they go ahead and move forward with this, but, um, if the county's interested, I would think that it would be good to enter into negotiations with the county. I mean, if we need to chip in for a county-wide resource, I have no problems with that, and as long as it gets purchased.
Right.
And, I mean, I think they're going to purchase it, probably, they swept in underneath you to do this, so...
Yeah, and, and I'm absolutely A-OK with that. If we can work out something where, um, we put some skin in the game, the, the overall objective is to have a unit available to use, whether it's ours and they have, use it when they need it, whether it's theirs and we all use it when we, when we possibly need it, that's the main thing. And the more agencies that we could get to, to get involved with it, the better the operation would actually be.
Depending on how often it would be used, I'm a lot more comfortable pitching in with everybody than footing the bill ourselves.
Right. I don't...
I am too, I like that idea, Susan.
And I don't know what the, what, price-wise, what they've negotiated, I, I'm totally outside of that, so I don't know.
I think that's a, that's a much more efficient use of our resources, I think.
So if that's something that, that you're open to, um, I'll certainly start that negotiation with the county that, hey, we're willing to help, is it, you know, a third, is it a quarter, whatever the cost of it is, and, um, and go from there.
I, I would definitely reach out and reach out to the other municipalities, I mean, we know that we've seen issues in Zionsville last time the meeting was needed, you know, they could use one in Zionsville then, then we just had the issue up in Lebanon, we could have had a command center, um, and look at it in, in terms of, of, you know, the, the needs and, and spreading, spreading the, the payment for that need, because it's, it's going to be a need in the future, if not now.
Right.
And that, it makes sense to me that it be housed at the county level, so it is available for everybody. I don't think we're quite big enough, personally, I don't think we're quite big enough to need this ourselves, but I think to, to assist and explain to the county that we, we see the need in this, we see the value in this, we want to help and participate in this, same way we did with the SRT team, let's please move forward with that.
Okay. Then that's the, that's the approach I'll take, and I'll approach them, and, um, see what kind of funding breakdown that we can do. Obviously, I won't be able to commit myself or commit us to them, but I'll get an idea of what that is, and I'll report that back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have a letter M, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for WFD promotional testing. Chief?
Uh, this purchase, um, is for a third-party entity to perform our promotional process testing, um, for lieutenant and captain's positions. Um, this is the same company we've used for all our hiring process and all our promotion processes in the past, uh, provides standardized third-party, uh, operations for it.
I like that. For some reason, I was thinking advertising when it said promotional, but...
We have, it's just, it hasn't exceeded the $5,000 mark. Since we're doing both processes for lieutenant and captain, it puts us over, over the mark.
Since we're saying the one time, instead of doing it each time?
And once the list are made off the process, as long as there's people still remaining on the list, it's valid for two years.
I'd make a motion that we approve the expenditure to IS, IPSP promotional testing, not to exceed $6,500.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, letter N, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000, uh, for WFD for the EMS training mannequin.
Uh, yes, this, uh, as far as ALS interventions, um, IV starting, uh, performing, um, cricks, um, defibrillating, defibrillating, cardiac pacing, so on and so forth, all the advanced, uh, EMS skills, we don't have any mannequin for that. Um, this, uh, mannequin, we'd like to purchase out of the EMS revenue, so it's coming from the transport funds, and, um, mannequins range anywhere from a thousand dollars a piece for, like, single use, or up to $30,000 for above and beyond for things we don't need. Um, we're searching for a middle-of-the-road mannequin, um, it's, um, the cost of it is $12,240, um, and we'll be able to have it for multiple, uh, different scenarios, it actually can be wireless for field use, if we want to put the mannequin somewhere away from us, uh, run the scenarios, it reacts to, to things.
Would it be available for the police to use also with their training?
Uh, yes, it will, um, although they don't operate advanced life support.
Like CPR and all the other, defibrillating and all that?
Yeah.
I mean, two big points about this is, one, this is something that's coming out of that EMS revenue that we've been generating, we just appropriated $99,000, um, tonight. In addition, you know, we now have civilian medics, we have one civilian medic, uh, on shift every day. So with the fire department already having, uh, dedication to training, at the fire board meetings every month, we hear about all the training hours that they're putting in, this is just another tool to help keep them trained at the top of the line, so that in the case they have to use it, they will be able to do it correctly.
So is it not to exceed, you need the $12,240, or is it actually about that?
The last price I checked was $12,240. Um, I'm sure there's shipping involved with that, I'm not sure what that would be, um, so I would recommend not to exceed $13,000.
All right, I, I move that we approve, uh, not to exceed, uh, $13,000 for the EMS training mannequin.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to hang out here.
Yep, you better. Discuss, letter O, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000, uh, the night, night brain training software to replace current target solution system.
Right, and actually, that's a, it's a typo, not that it really matters, it's ninth, as in after eighth brain. Um, here nor there, uh, currently, we use target solutions, um, for our record management software for training and to post trainings. Um, it's become relatively outdated, and it's not a friendly user interface, um, and it's a year-to-year contract that we do for target solutions. Um, now, we would like to switch that, as a lot of agencies in the region have included, uh, including Indianapolis Fire Department, has moved from target solutions to ninth brain. Um, it offers a little bit more as far as the ISO tracking and training, um, the ability, the, the ease of ability to add our own custom trainings to it as well, other than just the OSHA compliance trainings that target solutions offers. Um, this does come with a, we're at the right time, where we have not renewed our target solutions for this year, so we're not losing any money on that. Um, in fact, we've actually kind of pushed it down the road a little bit on paying the invoice they're asking until we can get here tonight. Um, but with this, um, it is a, uh, $1,425 increase over what we've been paying year to year.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of $6,804, it's about $6,804 for the ninth brain training software to replace the target solutions.
Second.
Is that, is that price set in stone?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have letter P, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for the town quarterly magazine.
Well, we've had the talk of adding a way to reach the public, um, aside from social media, so, uh, first, I'd like to introduce everybody to Sarah Burns, the new event coordinator, she wasn't able to make it last month. Um, she's worked hard on this over the past, what, three, four weeks, um, so I'll let her kind of explain what she's done, so she can take a little glory for this project, but the hope is to initially pay the five, get the $5,000 council out of promotions line to get it going, but there will be ad space available in it, so it'll eventually become a self-sufficient item, um, but we just, to get it started, but I'll let Sarah explain all that.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Um, so this magazine, um, we intend to be a quarterly magazine, um, we intend for it to come out first in August of this year, um, and then every three months afterward, after that, sorry about that, this is my first time standing up here, hot mic. Um, anyways, so there will be ad space available, it's going to cost us approximately $5,000 to get the magazine printed, as well as distributed. We plan on printing about 5,000 copies and distributing them to Whitestown residents, and then, um, some of the residents in Zionsville and Lebanon that kind of fall on those mailing routes. Um, the magazine is not going to just be a parks and recreation magazine, it will cover, um, all departments such as public safety, town planning, and public relations, and then obviously, it will cover the events that the Parks Department and the other department is having. Um, some feedback that I've gotten from residents is that not all of them are on social media, and they want to know what's going on, so they don't really have a resource for that, so, um, that is what the purpose of the magazine would be. So we're just asking, like Nathan said, for $5,000 to cover it upfront while we build the, um, ad space for it, so...
I think this is a great idea, to get to the people who don't have social media.
$5,000 for the first issue or for the whole?
It'll be $5,000 per issue, yeah.
I think it's a good idea, the one thing I'd say is that, um, well, it doesn't matter which department actually puts the magazine together, that the PR department be in charge of making sure the message is uniform through the entire town, so this becomes part of our PR.
Yeah, and Tanya and I have been working closely on it, um, and in order for us to cover the 5,000 every quarter, we'll only need to sell about forty, forty-eight percent of the ad space, um, so, you know, once we get it out there and show businesses how many people are seeing it and provide the value, um, I'm certain that we'll be able to cover costs, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the expend, oh, do you want just 5,000, or are you wanting more? Because you're asking to exceed.
Um, I would say $5,500 would be, would be good. Yes, $5,500, not to exceed $5,500.
Okay, not to exceed $5,500 for the town quarterly magazine, beginning with an eight-one launch.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Up next, we have letter Q, discuss the addition of line items and funding for the 2017 budget, Assistant PR Director line.
Good evening. You guys are at record...
You haven't been up here much.
At record pace, and I haven't been up here, I, I'm going home.
Don't talk too soon.
Okay.
True.
I have a question.
Right. Um, before I get into that, I don't know if the five of you and anybody else in the room realizes that tonight is our very first ever live-streamed town council meeting. So Glenn and Tanya are up there, Glenn's really Glenn's baby, he's up there, uh, he's just gotten a word from an outsider that it looks great and sounds great, so we didn't want to really get that widely out there until we knew that we had a test run going, um, but I think Tanya's tweeted it a couple of times and has let people know on social media, but we are officially live-streaming, and from now on, just about every meeting that we can possibly livestream, will be livestreamed, so... Um, we, it, when we did the budget, uh, a couple of things happened. The, in, in the salary ordinance, we agreed to place in there the Assistant, uh, PR Director. That hire has, uh, produced, uh, tenfold in return on investment, Glenn has done us very well. We did not, uh, place a line item in the budget. So there is money, um, my suggestion is this, that, uh, we're halfway through the year, and the Assistant Town Manager position has not been filled, although I, I think we're close, um, we'll take half that budget, put it into, uh, throw it over to this Personal Services Line that does not take a transfer of appropriations, according to what Steve and I have talked about, it's just a, an internal move. Um, same applies to the FICA, and same applies to the health insurance, so... Now, in the 2018 budget, obviously, which is getting ready to come in front of you, um, there will be money for this line, we don't see a major issue with revenues that are coming in. So in the 2018 budget, this will have its own line, um, right now, they're getting paid both out of one line, and we just need to transfer some money. So we need to create the line of Assistant PR Director, um, FICA is in that department, I believe, is already created, and FICA and health insurance, I think, in that line is, in that department's already been created, so just move some dollars from the town administration, Personal Services, we may also be able to move some, uh, money from, it's either planning or, or there's another Personal Services Line that we can move money from very comfortably... Services Line that we can move money from very comfortably, because we're halfway through a year and haven't filled a position or haven't used any money, to fund the correct way this particular line. So that's why this is on the agenda in front of you tonight, it's really a cleanup of the 2017 budget so that we're coding things properly and, and paying Glenn out of the PR department.
How much are you asking?
For the remainder of the year, his salary will add up to about $32,000. His FICA will be somewhere around 2,300, I have it on my desk, 2,400. And health insurance will be around, if I remember correctly, about $4,000.
So I'd make the motion that we move not to exceed 39,000 from the Assistant Manager line item and create the new line item for the Assistant PR Director line and fund it with that 39,000?
I would do this, let's, the numbers I just gave you, I think we'll move 30,000 from the Assistant Town Manager position and 2,400 from the Town Administration FICA. And I think there's enough health insurance in the PR, as a matter of fact, I looked at it today, there's enough health insurance in the line PR department to cover both of them for the remainder of the year.
So I will amend my motion to move 30,000
Yes.
From the Assistant Manager position to the newly created Assistant PR Director line and to move 2,400 from the FICA line into this.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero. Up next, we have letter R, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000, Engineering Services Proposal for DPW Maintenance Building Expansion.
I'm back. So we have $6.7 million sitting in the bank with a bond to build Fire Station 72. We can't find any land on which to do that, so we're still in land search phase and multiple different ideas are being floated out there of what to do because of our land issues. One thing that we know is going to happen is the Fleet Department's gonna have to move out of Cozy because Cozy is likely going to be remodeled into a very nice, small fire station with that money that we have and the refinancing bond from the Perry Industrial Park. Chief, that's, it's an idea coming from Chief Westrich. So Fleet needs to move. The best, the most ideal place for Fleet to move is to the DPW Maintenance Facility, which we just built, if you haven't been there, I would suggest you go, it's a nice facility. That we built for under $500,000, I believe. And so what we propose is that out of the MVH budget and the utility budget, that we consider expanding that facility and we would need obviously an engineer, the same engineer that engineered the building in the first place, to draw up plans with which to do so. And this proposal, which would come out of those two funds, MVH and Utility Fund, would pay for that service. And then we estimate right now, it's probably gonna be around 270 to 290,000 to expand the building. My suggestion for that funding is MVH cash reserves, which we still have, MVH cash reserves and Jason has also stated, because this will also be a building that will house the utility inspectors' offices. So it'll be a dual expansion to house the utility inspectors' offices and the Fleet Department. Wash bay for all trucks, including the utility trucks, so that this funding gets separated 50/50 between the WMU and the MVH funds. So you have a picture, I believe, I gave you in your packet, you have a picture of what the expansion looks like, and you have the proposal in front of you. And what's in front of you tonight is the proposal for Engineering Services, not necessarily the, obviously, the approval and move forward with funding of the entire structure.
So what's in front of us is about 45,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, is that the biggest building we could put on that spot?
That'll, that'll, that'll put us out of room. That'll put us almost to the eastern edge of that property. There's two buildings on the spot, spot now. We suggested the building that's currently housing the inspector, which used to be the entire, really the headquarters for the wastewater treatment side of the utility, that become the Facility Maintenance Building where Chuck keeps his mowers and his tremors and his office, works his staff out of that building. So we're finally getting to that, out of that startup and into that company that's in the second stage and having the proper facilities in which to run out of. We believe that that building becomes Facility Maintenance, you wanted to build one for that, 72 Cozy becomes a true small fire station, Fleet moves out to where it should be, which is in the DPW Maintenance Barn, and you have the Utility Inspector's Office slash Wash Bay in that, in that as well.
Entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, we accept the proposal for the Engineering Services Maintenance Building Expansion not to exceed 45,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero. Up next, we have letter S, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for the expansion of the Employee Wellness Program.
So I don't know if Parrish, when he was up here, told you how big of a hit this is, but if he didn't, he should have. Not only is it a hit for our employees that took advantage of it, but it was apparently gotten to some of his other communities and they're incredibly envy of us, envious of us, and wanna know why their communities don't do this for their employees. I thought he was gonna mention that tonight, but maybe he did not, maybe it slipped his mind. It has been, in my opinion, it's brought a lot of us together, a lot of us met at noon or at five in the morning or at five at night, brought this team even closer than what it already is. And as you heard, we're self-insured, and the more we do with wellness, the better off we are. Even Oxient was here, John from Oxient, and he even gave us great praise for doing what you did to fund this initial three months of this program. What I'd like to discuss, and we certainly don't have to, this, that's why I had as a discussion item, is to consider funding for the remainder of the year, the continuance of the program with some incentive, and then funding it annually. And Hackers has put a pretty good proposal in front of us that I'd like you to consider, and I will send you an email, and we can, you can think about this and chew on it. What his proposal is this, $500 a month covers memberships for our entire insured staff. Everybody gets a membership to the gym, 500 a month. So that's about 74.
Are you sure that wasn't a typo?
No, it's not a typo, it's not a typo. I called him today and confirmed. 500 a month gives us gym, gym memberships, memberships to Hackers for our entire insured staff, which I think is up to like 72 or 74, I'll have to double check. So obviously at 12 months, that's $6,000. And then the wellness program would work this way, he would add some classes, the classes are $60 a class, they're not $60 a person, which I think is fantastic. So our entire insured staff could take advantage of these classes, 13 classes per week that you can take advantage of. There's 4.3 weeks per month, and so at, at $60 per class, that's five, I'm sorry, nine classes, so nine, obviously nine times 60 is 540 per week, $2,322 per month, $27,864 annually for the wellness program. There are different things that Matt can suggest that we do, and what we found this first three months was this, we said if you go through the first three months and you don't miss a class and you do them, we gave, we gave you one opportunity, but other than that, if you missed any more, you would not get your additional $200 in your HSA. Some people did not continue on in the program, I am one of them, and dropped out. So that, that carrot was no longer in front of you and you dropped out of the program. He has some really good suggestions, in my opinion, of how we, how that does not happen moving forward, and how that carrot doesn't go away. And it's based on points, it's based on heart rate monitor that he sells, competition, if you will, but how many points you get, so that you're not obligated necessarily to come in one day every week, but you can get your points in different ways. It's really not for what we're talking about here, but, so annually, it would cost with the membership to the gym at 6,000, and the wellness program, we're right around, I rounded up, we're right around 37, 36, 37,000 annually for the wellness program and the membership to the facility. For the remainder of 2017, that would be 17,000, which we would likely take out of Councilman Baum's Flush Fund. Flush?
You made it the Flush Fund.
No, it was only Flush Fund we were talking about.
Do we need nine classes a week?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, because you gotta remember, that's nine opportunities for people to take advantage of the program. That's not nine, that's not us going to nine classes a week, that's five in the morning on Monday, five in the morning on Tuesday, five in the morning on Wednesday, that's, those are the nine, nine opportunities to go in and take advantage of the program. So absolutely, when you have that many people and the schedules are all messed up and the PD work night shifts and you've gotta have, you gotta give them ample opportunities to go in. I think we all used all nine opportunities, because some people would go at noon and then noon wouldn't work because we were busy in this building and you'd have to go at 5:30 in the evening, or some of the PD would get off their shift and we created kind of something for them that they'd go at seven. So having those multiple opportunities, I think is, is the best way to go.
I think the question here is, what is important to us as the town? And that's providing as many opportunities and ways as possible for our employees to be healthier, to have that chance that they can improve their health status. It will make them a happier person, it will improve their work life, it'll improve their home life, and hey, you know what, with a little investment upfront, it actually then also saves us, just like the numbers we heard earlier today, being self-insured, our costs are coming down, and that's just with the little we've done. As we continue to improve and expand our ability and our opportunities for our employees to take advantage of these wellness programs, we're gonna see that come back to us threefold on the backend when our insurance comes through, when we start to make these renewals. So I think this is a great idea and an opportunity for us to take advantage of. So I thank you for bringing it to us.
I second what Councilman Baum said.
Sir. So what you'll see in the 18 budget, you'll see this in the health insurance lines throughout the departments, including the premiums that we have to pay and the HSA. For 17, I would like to discuss this again in your special meeting on the 29th that will be called via that email. It'd be nice to talk about this possibly on that agenda, so that we could get something to Matt, consider something. If you don't want to, then that's fine. I think that we have the funding to do it, but I will, I'll, I'll make sure that we are 100% certain that we do, and that it won't put a negative, it won't negatively impact our current budget. But I, I know that I had a police officer email me thanking me for the program, and I've had multiple people come up and say, hey, are we continuing? Because we're in limbo now, we've ended the first 13-week program, and I think that all the employees that took advantage would tell you that they, they would love to continue on. So.
Yeah, please add it to the agenda.
Okay. We'll do so, and I'll give you a fiscal impact statement on it in a council action form.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right. Letter T, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for Engineering Services for Walker Park.
So residents all the time email us, they, social media says, why don't we have a community center? And I'd say, because they cost 15 to 30 million dollars. Why don't we have a main street trail? And I say, because it costs 2.000, you know, some odd million dollars. A topic recently that's come up is the lack of basketball and tennis court type facility that town has in any of its park structures. Nathan and I, I asked Nathan to ask Shrewsbury to begin the process of looking at the construction of basketball and tennis courts in Walker Park, for now. We need them everywhere, we need them all over town, but maybe the first thought for now. And the proposal you have in your packet there is from Shrewsbury to design the courts. And then they, they estimate a cost of not to exceed 110,000 to build the courts. I would suggest that there are different sources of revenue with which to do that. Town General has a very healthy cash reserve at this point, nearly 1.4 million dollars, and certainly suggests that if we do this project, we consider an additional appropriation out of Town General Cash Reserves to do this. I think that you will have, for a minimal cost, you will have happy residents now. We need to get one down in the southwestern portion of town, obviously we need the land down there, so land is our first, and we're looking at land opportunities down by Eagles Nest and Westwood Landing, soon to be Gulf Globe of Indiana with all their homes that they'll build. We understand that that needs to be done as well, but we have Walker Park, it's our land, we have to start somewhere, so. I think that this would be well-received by the residents of the town and be a very nice facility at the end of the day, which means we'd be adding bathrooms in Panther Park and basketball slash tennis court in Walker Park this year, which is, kudos to Nathan and staff and working with me to, to look at ways to get this done.
Yeah, I think this is fantastic, and thank you Nathan, thank you Dax, all of you for, for getting this in front of us, because I mean, these are things that are needed in the town.
Why not two and two, why not two basketball courts and two tennis courts?
Well, you want two and two, that's, we were just trying to save a little money. Because right now, we have zero basketball courts, so to have one is a.
We have a sorta one at Panther Park and.
We have a sorta one, yes, you're right, it's a sorta one.
So, I mean, I would, I, I'd like to see two basketball courts, I think we have the population over there, two, who would be utilizing those two basketball courts, probably all waking hours and plus some.
Nathan has mentioned that while we're doing this, he's also looking at new equipment, playground equipment at the same time while we would be doing this project in the park, to consider new playground equipment there as well, so.
No, I'm good with the two and two, I think that's a good thing. I mean, we're talking about in the last 18 months, finishing the, our section of the Big Four Trail, we're gonna put bathrooms into Panther Park and we're going to upgrade Walker Park as part of our move to create the quality of life amenities that we're hearing from Economic Development Corporation and other partners, that citizens want, especially the millennial population. And this really fits in well, I know I say it all the time, this fits in well with our comprehensive plan that we updated just a couple of years ago, and this move is great, and I think this is wonderful to move forward with, and again, increasing it to two courts of each, I think would be a great idea as well.
I agree.
Right now, Town General Cash Reserve is $1,398,674. It's 203 days in reserve. It's 203 days in reserve.
Spend it all tonight.
I would think that the residents would want us to spend a little bit of that instead of keeping too much of it and giving them amenities rather than sitting in the back.
Will there need to be an adjustment to this proposal with the two and two?
Nathan, you here? I would say probably, I would probably say no.
I would think no, because once they design one court, it's just a matter of putting a footprint of another, because a lot of the engineering men, they've already laid out Walker Park because they did the parking lots there, so they already have some of it, so when they go out to do the additional, I mean, it's a matter of laying it same time that there are design standards.
And let's make sure that we're outside any right-of-way, that should they decide to make that a two, super two, that we're not having to tear out and redo at future date.
Well, these will be built close to the nature park and the trail and away from the, residents have asked us to build them away from the parking lot, so that they're not in their, so it'll be built, I think Nathan's doing it towards the shelter house.
Okay.
We're going to design at least space for a future restroom, because we have some utility issues that are big concerns that are figuring out beforehand. So we'll design and show that footprint, and then put those in where they'll be on the other side of the basketball court.
This will be back in front of you for funding, but we obviously have to have the engineering services done first before we can move forward with.
Yeah, and I just ask that, you know, make sure it's expandable, should they need, I mean, that's 1,100 home subdivision, plus all the legacy corp, who could ride a bike and go over there and use it. So I would make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of the $4,500 for and accept the proposal from Shrewsbury.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, motion is adopted, five to zero.
And that'll be Town Professional Services, so. It's a line that'll come out of.
Next, letter U, discuss the creation of a town scholarship program.
Okay. Councilors, I'm the one that asks this to be put on the agenda, and I'll give you a slight bit of history. Within my son's school system, we have two different school systems in the town, plus private schools, kids that go to private schools. They have an awards night for the graduating seniors, and my son was there to get an award for his Eagle Scout. And as I was watching this, I was watching all sorts of organizations promoting what they believe in by awarding scholarships. And it dawned on me, why can we not promote civic involvement by our children by awarding a small stipend scholarship, 500 or $1,000, to a student that's going on that has shown that they're willing, like our student council, student town council that we have, that we have kids in our town, that we promote them to get involved civically. There are, as I said, two different school systems, plus private schools and stuff, so one original thought was possibly two scholarships. But that might leave out the kids that go to private schools or schools outside of the system. So my suggestion, and actually what I'm saying, I'm asking council commission, is to investigate to see if this is feasible. And if it is, I would say that to get it for next year, I'd actually have to be back here in the August council meeting to get some kind of approval for it, in order to have time to get it completely set up. But that we, my initial idea is five scholarships, one per counselor, doesn't restrict it to districts, but five small scholarships, see how we can fund that, donations, et cetera, et cetera, how we can get involved in promoting it, and how do we promote the kids to get involved civically? This is the reason that I'm truly pursuing it. My children are both, that are still in high, they're still in middle school, my other two, so they wouldn't possibly get affected by this, and the other ones already graduated. Coincidentally, I had a discussion, as you know, I have a shop in the common library, and I had a discussion with the common library director today, every year, the kids that, within the common clay system, that are getting involved with library services and stuff. So I just, I want to investigate the feasibility, and I wanted your guys' blessing in order to do it.
So do Zionsville do this, or Lebanon?
Zionsville did not, at least not in the one that I was in. But I hate to say this, but it would be interesting to see Dax say, Dax, if they're awarding the scholarships for the town of Whitestown within the Zionsville school system, or within the Lebanon school system, promoting Whitestown. So it would promote our brand and our name, as well as encouraging kids to get involved.
I think personally, I'd just want to see a lot more detail around this, because I'd...
I'm not asking for approval of the system, I'm asking, just saying, your consensus that it'd be okay to go and investigate to see if this is feasible and how it might be done?
I think it's okay to investigate anything, but, I mean, having each of us hand out one, I don't feel comfortable with that. I don't, that just doesn't feel right to me. It feels political.
And that's, I just, and like I said originally, it was thinking of two, but that does exclude the kids that go to the other schools, that don't go to those, and that was my concern on that. You know, and it doesn't have to be one per counselor and everything, please, I invite other ideas on this, I'm just, you know, off the cuff, how do we set this up to get the kids involved? And you don't have to award them if you don't have kids that apply and/or that qualify. So thoughts, any other thoughts?
If we were to move forward, I want to make sure that we are on firm legal footing to make sure we don't get ourselves into any kind of...
I agree on that, that was one of the things that I need to...
In addition, I want to echo President Miller's concerns about an individual council person picking winners and losers inside the town when it comes to these things. I am more than willing to discuss our staff and our efforts as a town being put behind private organizations, and assisting them, and raising donations, and spreading their message to get scholarship opportunities out there to the kids in our communities. I just have a lot of concerns and hesitations with us as a town taking taxpayer dollars, setting them aside, to then decide as a council, who among our constituents and who among our residents is going to get these scholarships, and who does not.
Any other feedback?
I'm really uncomfortable with this for the multitude of reasons that have already... I'm uncomfortable with this with the multitude of reasons that have been shared. There are a number of organizations in Boone County that do nothing but try to, you know, have the foundations to do the scholarships and to do that and run through this. Having been involved in previously trying to set up a scholarship program in memory of someone, I can tell you it is labor-intensive, it is time-intensive, getting the donations is very intensive, the requirements for us then to be a 501(c)(3) in order to give those out is very intensive, and that was with paid staff to do it, an organization that had paid staff. I would say that this is something that is way too big for our staff to try to bite the elephant on and try to eat it and try to make this happen, when we have so many other priorities right now in the town that we need to focus on. So I would say this is, this would be nice if you want to take time and do a little bit of research, but my experience is that this is well beyond our abilities to do and manage on a long-term, ongoing basis. And if we can't do it for the long run, we shouldn't just do it for a year or two.
Well, it was to do for the long term, but fine, I'll not pursue it. I think we need to do something to promote the civic involvement in our kids, and I thought this might be an ideal opportunity.
Well, yeah, I think there are plenty of other ways to promote civic involvement without handing out scholarships for their involvement. I mean, we can't force people to want to be involved, obviously, but I think there are plenty of ways to promote it.
I mean, perhaps we can help and reach out to the school systems and ask them, when they're starting to share with their students what the scholarship programs are, we can ask, try to get it linked up to our website, so that we can tell our students, come to our website, look at the scholarship opportunities that you could apply for, and be, help expand that reach for the school systems and the guidance counselors who are sharing that information.
Additionally, when it comes to promoting civic involvement by the youth, I think that's a great objective for us to have, and I think we can actually come at this a different way. We have the youth council, as you referred to, and we're coming up on a new school year here in a month and a half, and I know that Dax and Tanya are going to be working a lot with the school corporation, see them on social media all the time, making visits to Lebanon and to Zionsville and to Traders Point, and what we can do is make sure that maybe in July, have a short presentation on what their game plan is to get the word out, so that we can increase the involvement and activity of the youth council, and what other opportunities we have for the youth in the community to have that civic engagement, how can we invite them? We do know that on several occasions at this meeting and at other commission meetings, we have them coming, them being the students that are involved in those government classes, to take their notes and have that class credit given out for attending these meetings. If we can coordinate with the government teachers and the history professors that are sending them to these meetings, then we can actually have that be a positive part of our meeting. We can engage with those students when they get here, so it's not just they sit in the back and take some notes and leave, but we can actually get them involved and then increase the civic involvement that way, again, without putting us in a situation of picking winners and losers.
I would also think that we'll have an opportunity, sorry, I'm going to jump right in, but this would be a great item to include in the Whitestown quarterly newsletter, if we could steal some space for that. Get the message out.
I think they heard you. All right, we'll move on to letter V, appointments to boards and commissions, and we only have one, it's to the RDC, and I would move that we appoint Adam Hess to the Whitestown RDC.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Next is letter W, consider waiving building fees for St. Mark's Lutheran Church.
So St. Mark's, I believe one of the oldest buildings in the Legacy Corp. Beautiful building, has been inundated with floodwaters multiple times in their basement. Hopefully, that part of their remedy will be coming, I think it starts next week with the stormwater improvement plan, Lesse Corp. They are beginning the process of renovating that basement, and they're having to pull some building permits, because they're doing some walls and electrical on each back. And we think it's only fitting, Dave Taylor, the building department director, myself included, think it's only fitting that we waive the fees for St. Mark's to undergo the renovations of their basement. And that's what we have in front of you, this is not unprecedented, we waive fees for the Habitat House, and we've waived fees for the Mountain House, I think that's what they call it, which is the home that New Hope is building for the mothers and the children. So it's not the first time that we would have done this for not-for-profit, and Lauren is looking long and hard at the fees that we charge for, say, not-for-profit entities to pull permits, because some of them obviously aren't strapped and full of cash, so, that's what we're asking you to do.
I'd make a motion that we waive the fees for the remodeled permits by planning for the St. Mark's Lutheran Church remodel.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Moving on to the town administration report.
First, Adam Hess is here. Adam, hello, stand up. Adam is the, let's see if I can get this right, he's economic development, what's your title at CSX?
I do some development for CSX.
So he does economic development for CSX. He's a great asset to economic development, working with Mali, and, you know, obviously Lebanon is served by CSX, and what happens, successes in Lebanon are successes for Whitestown and the entire county. Adam lives in Clark Meadows, as a pro, we've had a couple of great, a couple of good meetings. He spoke this morning at the Boone EDC Investors Breakfast, which was held here in this building, and I think he makes a wonderful addition to the redevelopment commission, so, thank you, Adam.
Thanks for being willing to serve, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, updates on projects. The Whitestown Parkway beautification project, the engineers are still going over, it's, believe it or not, way more complicated than we ever expected because of soil. So the soil has to be right, the electrical has to be in the right place, we're looking at the pedestals that may be needed for public art. I talked to Sarah, I had called Sarah this morning, and she hasn't gotten back to me yet. Is Lori still here? She is. It's probably, believe it or not, been more complicated to do this project than to build a $4 million road, which I sometimes find interesting. But I think that we're closing in on being done, I won't put Lori in her spot with timeline, but fall plantings, we're hoping, I'm hoping that we can go to bid in the first of July, open those bids in the middle of July, you approve those bids in August, and we can get the project underway mid-August and do fall plantings, which is okay, because that's probably when they need to be done anyway, so. Whitestown Parkway Improvement Project, which is the ban that you all approved out of Maple Grove, TIF, ban has been closed, sent to your bank, money is in the account. Jason is working with engineers now to bid it, I think it will go to bid, I think it's either the end of this week, or, actually, it's in the paper now. It's in the paper now. So you'll probably hear, as a matter of fact, I know we have a timeline for you to approve those bids at your July meeting, and then the project gets started. So it's, as you know, an addition of, addition of a path that takes you from the Stonegate entrance, all the way up here to Veterans Drive, and connects into our trail network there, with a trail that runs here on the north side of Batwell, and connects into the sidewalk over here. There'll be some additional dollars left, we believe, somewhere around $400,000. Those have not been earmarked for spending at this point, so we'll have to have a discussion about what happens with the additional dollars, $300,000, $400,000 out of that ban.
Quick clarification on the sidewalk that you're talking about. Will it extend to the other side, past McDonald's, onto the property that currently does not have a sidewalk, and then connect with the sidewalk system on the north side of the buildings?
Two issues. Heartland, Batwell ends at Heartland Drive, we do not own the drive that runs west of Heartland over to Main Street. So we don't own any right-of-way there, we don't own the ground that has no sidewalk. So to answer your question, no, this project would not place a sidewalk there, for the mere fact that we don't place sidewalks necessarily that aren't in our right-of-way or on one of our easements. Could we get the ground from, I believe that's Huntington Bank?
It is.
We could.
We've had this discussion before.
We could. Are they going to give it to us? I'm not sure. We will have that discussion, however. That could be some of the additional dollars that are left in the ban. We also want to do a sidewalk down the Central Boulevard on the south side of Central that runs behind Meyer and up here to the veterinary group, so.
So you're going to talk to Huntington Bank?
We will have discussions with Huntington Bank about it. We also, I believe, Jason and I have had some brief conversations about this, we need to have a conversation about that road being dedicated to us, so that Batwell Drive actually runs officially from 700 East to Main Street. I can start to see, as I walk that road every morning, it's starting to fall apart. Having to rely on the owners, which is, there's multiple owners right now, to maintain that's probably going to be a difficult process, so it may be a good idea that we ask them to dedicate that to us, and we maintain it at this time, so, another project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The roundabout you heard tonight, we're in land acquisition phase, things are going relatively well, except for a couple of holdouts, so part of what you heard tonight was to deal with some of that. But things are moving forward with the land acquisition of the roundabout. Utilities should start to be moved sometime in late fall, and then construction of the actual... actual roadway after the first of the year, and through 2018. As we know, it's a federal 80-20 project, and those take forever, because they're generally awarded and then they're five to six years out from there. So moving along with the roundabout at Whitestown Parkway and Indianapolis Road. If you've been in Legacy Corp lately, you'll see that there was a big hole in the roof of the old high school yesterday, because the Matco construction took the roof off, they're replacing bad sections, and I, I don't know if they covered the roof today. In your consent agenda was the bids for the roof, because the redevelopment commission is then reimbursing Matco for the construction as part of the economic development agreement, so. Roof is going on, if you walk inside the building, you really won't believe it, it's quite impressive what's happening, and they're moving at warp speed. Vectren is going to begin the process of meeting with neighbors because they're about to start running the lines. So they're in front of you at your last council meeting, I think they're working out easement issues with some of the last and final residents, and then they'll very soon start to move gas signs into Legacy Corp, which was a major goal of ours in 2014, 15, I'm so excited that we get to, that gets to happen. The county is moving forward with construction of the connector, 300 and 400, as anybody that's driven out there can see. So I'm not sure what the timeline is at this point, I know that our street superintendent, Josh McClung, is, has been invited to progress meetings, and he just went to one, I just haven't had a, an opportunity to get with Jason to see what he stated at the progress meeting.
Have we heard back from the county on whether they were accepting our money, the match?
Not a word on whether they're accepting our money, and not a word on, we did send them a letter clarifying the, number one, the law that states that that road will be ours when it's complete, and the language in the interlocal, that if the interlocal was terminated, that that road will still be dedicated to us as well. So, no, no response to that email that was sent by the attorneys in letter form, absolutely no response to my request when I met with the county council publicly on whether they want our $216,000, so. I'm assuming that if they don't, that that $216,000 that we've earmarked in the MVH budget can move on to different projects.
That's disappointing considering that they were here in front of us asking for that money. That's all, I'm a little confused.
I think we're still a little bit confused as well. With the, and in not just this, not just this circumstance, but with the shooting in Washington with the congressman, Chief Anderson has done a great job of paying attention, sent us all an email, I think you all got it. One, one of the, that has caused us to be more vigilant on, on security here in this One thing that has happened, if you walk to the front, you'll see an office has been built and the desk has been moved. We would like to take some of the remaining town hall bond money and glass off that front. Too many people can just walk in, and Lauren ends up having somebody right in front of her in her office, that's dangerous. We'd like to glass off that front, and we'll have a, a person there to greet folks, but it'll be probably a sliding glass situation. What that'll do is we would lock this east door during the day, you would have to enter through the four main entrance doors that face east, and then when you entered the building, you'd have to go to that person that greets you up front and ask to enter into the office area to whomever you would like to see. I'm asking you.
How does that impact the rental of this and the use of the restrooms and?
It doesn't, because we can open up the glass doors, and there's a door there, if you rent the facility, you can always open those doors up, to have, you know, free-flowing access to the building. All it does is glass run off that hallway, I mean, if, Chief told me that, I'm kind of worse off because of where my desk is, if somebody were to come in there and come around my corner, I'm, I'm finished, quickly, with people not even knowing it just because of where my office is. Not afraid for myself, I'm, there's just too many people that have easy, way too easy access. I went into a couple other town halls recently, and I can tell you, you can't just walk into theirs. You, you have to get past somebody to free-flow the building. It will not affect the rental of the facility or the free, the flowing of the facility, but certainly would provide us with some additional security, which I think is much needed at this point, so. I don't have any dollar figures yet, once I do, I'll put that in front of you and show you it, kind of a design, and we'll move forward from there, but I wanted you to know that we're thinking about, it's probably something that we need to be vigilant about moving forward.
Please keep looking.
We are in budget time, staff's meeting in the morning to go over the, so we can get the Form Ones done. Form Ones will be on your agenda on that June 29 special meeting. Form Ones are due to the clerk treasurer, the financial consultants and clerk treasurer by the 30th for submission to the gateway. Comes up quick, and does it come up quick. So we've already met once as a staff, we'll meet second time on tomorrow, we'll meet a third time on Monday, the 26th. We'll show you the Form Ones on the 29th, we'll submit those Form Ones to the clerk treasurer for submission. And then I sent you all an email that had a timeline and budget hearings for July, so I would like you all to look at that and consider, you know, two days, three days, what that means, what we need to do to come in front of you to, to talk about the 18 budgets, the most important thing that we do, and so staff will be working hard to get that in front of you as soon as we possibly can, okay? The summer road program is underway, Jason and Josh are bidding some projects. In the February 1st meeting, we talked about some priority projects for MVH. One was the paving of County Road 700 East, all the way from Harvest Park to County Road 200 South. Right now, majority of that's gravel, and we don't want it to be gravel. There's a section there that doesn't exist, because that's where the connector is, so it's, there's a half mile from, or there's a mile from 400 to 300 that does not exist, and then you have another mile from 300 to 200 that is gravel that would be paved, and then some mileage from about 575 to 400, or not 575, it'd be like 475 to 400, about three-quarters of a mile from Harvest Park to the north. And then you have County Road 500 South, which is, runs from Main Street to Perryworth Road. Some of that's been paved by the developer for Clark Meadows, we would like to move forward and not have any more gravel. So they're getting you approved an engineering proposal at your last meeting, they're working on that right now, and getting that to out to bid as soon as possible. That would also include the paving of Main Street from 300 to 200, and the paving of 200 South from Main Street to 700, so kind of a square there. I can tell you that HWC has completed our TAMP, they will be presenting to you at your July meeting, and the TAMP is a kind of a, a PAZER on steroids, it's much better than the PAZER that you, that was presented to you two years ago, and what it showed was that our roads are in very, very good shape.
Not everyone knows explaining what a PAZER is.
PAZER, TAMP is Transportation Asset Management Plan. PAZER is a rating of our paved roads. So, our TAMP slash with a PAZER in it is, I saw it today, and it's very, very good. So we have done a very good job of taking the PAZER that was presented to us two years ago, and working hard to keep our roads maintained as best we can, to the point where we did this TAMP project, and it is in incredibly good shape, so. That'll be presented to you in July. That's all I have at this point.
I would entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Meeting's adjourned at 8:41 PM.